Yes, there's there's so there are probably a couple thousand dollars more expensive. There's revegetation and then um the gas line. The gas retrofit still needs to take place. Well, he told us Casey told us today. He said that is Casey John told us that is going to be less of a project than it. Was originally expected to be so you don't think that should be terribly expensive by down how about? And a more precise estimate for the additional costs, but they shouldn't be substantial.
I I have a couple thoughts about that. Do I have it first? No, I have. Um, you know, it's good job paying the bill. But you know, not, you know, we need these people to work for us. And in this environment, I think the last thing we want to do. You can argue with about it. Clearly, they were, you know, much longer and. They didn't bid it on a G max basis or a fixed price basis even, you know, it was bid as a three or more like a design build. And there was no price guarantee. We could start asking for price guarantees and we're going to pay a huge premium like twenty or thirty percent to for the contractor to be comfortable. Um, giving us a guarantee. So um, I don't think that's the answer. I think bidding it carefully. You know, if it was a really big project, we could look into some sort of a fixed price with a uh. Cost sharing incentive like, you know, we come over numbers five hundred and comes in at four hundred. And you share that savings with the contractor. That might make some sense to start moving uh in. But you know, the it was a huge amount of work. I'm not sure I was ever really a believer in thirty grand. And uh, you know, when you talk about the approving estates, we had to do that. We did that survey last fall too. It's sort of like an extra thing of the whole to understand even where the I swear our releases put in so long ago. And uh, nobody has any reference of that. Hopefully, part of. A refurbishment is that will end up with a really solid map and uh. They made good progress today on the proving thing. They moved probably at least a hundred feet, hundred fifty feet and uh.
Your pipe?
Uh, no digging in the hole. They're digging in the French. Yeah, I think they're they're putting the pipe in as they go.
Yeah.
Yeah, but uh, it looks good and I think they are going to get done this this month. As you said the other day, it was probably this month. Um, so you know, to me, that's exactly why we're um moving towards making this capex report. Part of the monthly uh info. So there'll be lots of opportunity to update it for changing figures like this. And um, and so I look forward to that and uh, I was gonna ask Jen. And maybe this question is appropriate because that change hasn't been made. But I think at some point we should adopt this form formally, just like one more time, like a normal um. Capex fund rookie uh adoption. And so the most recent one is this one rather than the old form. And maybe next month, you know, we could get any other updates, put them on this plan and we could just have a quick adoption of it. This having to be as part of the um. Part of the monthly uh reporting, does that obfuscate the need to approve approve it after changes are made or do we still need to approve it each each month? Or each time it changes, do we need to approve it?
I guess maybe Cameron, I'm gonna ask for your a little bit of help here. So if I understand the question correctly. There's a difference between acknowledging the report, you know, I'm presenting this report to you, right? As a reflection of my books. But there's a difference in that as opposed to you guys adopting a actual project plan. So Cameron, can you address that with any actions that we need to?
Yeah, so the the actual fund has to be approved uh and amended by the council formal.
And does that require public notice and public name?
It depends on what it's in. If it's in the regular budget process, that's the hearing process that we'll go through. And so if it's amended, yes, we would need a public hearing to amend and update it. The report, if I understand it correctly, is more of a uh working document and a and a project document. And so it's a supporting document for the approved budgeted capex fund and any amendment.
Do you say that, Jen? To me, I'm not sure I look at it that way. I must look at like this is this is the form that we approve. Or do you think the form is the vertical? Spreadsheet that you put together um that has the prior year info and stuff. That's what we need out for budgeting process.
It's the one you adopted in in August. That is what I would consider the official plan that's been adopted by the council, not what I presented today. This is just a year to date update.
Yeah, and I I'm a little confused is we traditionally, we update the budget in December. And to me, this is just a monthly variance report. That we take into consideration when we actually update the budget in in December. That would be the one where you'd be public hearing. Are you saying that if we have the variance on a project report every month, we have to? Adopt it, you know, change a budget and have a hearing? Or is the methodology that we've been using, which is just doing that in December, uh okay?
A question to Cameron?
Yeah, yeah. So so there is no statutory required format of the numbers. The the numbers are what is required to have a hearing is approval. So however it's presented. Can be a spreadsheet. It could be the report. It can be whatever. The official action has to be on the numbers that are contained within whatever that format is.
So would it be safe to say that our plan is that um? We're gonna keep this in the consent agenda. We're gonna update it when there's a change like a cost overrun, for instance. But we're just gonna acknowledge that it's in the consent agenda when we acknowledge everything else. And unless there's something really heavy to talk about. But then each time, aren't we on a plan now where each time we update the general budget? We've decided we'll go ahead and update the uh the capital spending budget as well. But that'll be the vertical one and you'll update those numbers from the cost overrun as well.
Yes, I will do both so that they match. Both the the um general fund budget, which while the general fund, capex, water sewer budgets, the four. And then this series of um documents as well, so that they all match.
And just to clarify, you the council could require uh a hearing and a formal approval uh every month if you if the council wants. It's just a lot more cumbersome and the statute requirements are the numbers at the beginning and any amendment, which generally takes.
I think the logic behind I see Craig over there. I think the logic behind. Updating it when we update the budget is it gets submitted with the budget. Uh whenever she files a new budget throughout the year. So we only do that two or three times, but it's a little bit irregular, but it, you know, but it's not a not a big schedule. But um when Jen fills us enough changes, she. Gets us to approve a new budget. And since this really is actually part of the budget, the vertical spreadsheet is part of the budget that we'll be updating and approving it.
Yeah, I was just differentiating that. I don't think we're submitting for a new budget every month.
Yeah.
And historically, we've done it, you know, twice a year. But of course, if there's a big number, it's you're gonna have to do it then.
It's great to know that then we're gonna start updating the spreadsheet as we go along throughout the year and that, you know, that's just construction work. And I remember the uh the one we had like a twenty percent um contingency. Well, you know what? Uh, yeah, we'll see. We'll see. I mean, that's why we had such a bad contingency. So I think this is a big step forward. I really like this plan now and thanks for taking the time to develop it.
Yeah, we're gonna chime in on one other thing, John, because I think uh I think your comment about fixed price contracts is exactly right. Yeah, I mean, maybe what we need to do is start putting error bars in around some of our 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 projects. This one sounds like, but certainly hindsight, it's an extremely risky one because we don't have the accurate drawings of the infrastructure. So if you're trying to shift that that risk on a private contractor, it's gonna be.
Super expensive.
Yeah, prohibitively expensive. So until we get on top of, you know, actually having the actual diagrams. And as and I wanna echo your comment on it is so hard to get a reliable contractor these days. That as long as we think the guy isn't cheating us and they're it sounds like they ran into real issues, right?
Yeah.
Because and nobody can do that on a fixed price basis if they don't have accurate diagrams. So I just think.
And we're protected somewhat by our procurement process. We're required to get multiple bids. So at least we're. We have a ballpark. Somebody else that's confirming it's in the ballpark. Is there somewhere around here? And so we're also protected by that. So.
Just some projects are inherently risky and maybe identifying the the riskier ones. Can help us as we start to do our budget estimates.
Well, sometimes you don't know what the risk is.
Well, if you if you know you don't have diagrams and everything's buried underground, that automatically high risk.
Yeah, in this case, we knew the five minute here and had to go to there. So what do you do? Well, it turned out there was a lot of work to it.
Yeah.
Great to get that work done and we're investing our time, energy and money in. In keeping our infrastructure up to snuff.
Yeah.
So that we can meet our responsibility to reliably deliver water to our citizens.
I I wanna say something about this five page uh budget uh. What what you call the combined project budget summary. I think it's a wonderful addition to the pack. So, well done.
Yeah.
Wonderful. You want to talk about Steve Rowley's letter?
Uh, let's see if there are any other comments on the uh on the uh consent agenda.
I just had a good question, actually, like about the fifty seven forest services.
Ah, yes. I'm sorry.
I thought you were ignored. I'm sorry. I I don't know.
Uh, so we we've got a law enforcement service agreement with Forest Service where they give us uh in the order of three thousand dollars. Annually to patrol federal lands. Part of that agreement is we have to die down the amount of time we spend controlling federal property. And so that activity uh represents patrol in the forest area. So it's not an incident. It's fifty seven separate patrols.
Yeah.
And if yeah, there's an incident connected with it, then that's a camera for the separately. I don't blame them. Well, Mike is still here. Any other questions concerning his um report? The things seem to be pretty quiet. I feel like he's a cure.
Mike's gonna report it one later. Is that correct?
No.
I just had a couple of questions and maybe this is not appropriate in this format. You can tell me I need to ask later. There were two very concerning things in your report. When was this such an assault that was in our community? Um, and then um are you allowed to discuss like where that took place?
Uh, it's an active investigation.
Okay.
Um, it's what occurred in one of the lodges thirty years ago.
Oh, okay. Geez, geez. Okay, I just wanna make sure that there was not a safety concern because many of us are quite.
Yeah, uh, no, this is uh somebody who has uh chosen the president to come forward with the allocation.
Okay. I'm sorry for your.
Okay, anything else?
Yes.
Yeah, go for it.
Um, I recognize sir that there were two watershed violations involving the dogs. Can you um share just a little bit about those, please?
Uh, when we deal with dog enforcement, it's gonna fall into one of two areas. It's gonna fall into a town organs violation and we've got a licensing or a compliance issue. Or it's gonna be a watershed issue where the dog is just prohibited from being in the canyon to begin with. So uh. Our enforcement strategy is to intervene and educate before we enforce. Let's say ninety nine percent of the time those contacts have been informed, which both of these did.
Okay, so they were not our community's dogs that were violating. They were dogs who couldn't be designed at the bottom.
Right. If we were to have a uh a town animal control uh violation, it would appears as that on the report.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm just wondering eventually dogs may come back to these table, but not yet. So I wanted some more details on that. Thank you.
Dogs in parking.
Yes, interlodge.
You wanna say anything about parking? You know, we're uh we're um at Chris's direction. We're gonna be having a meeting tomorrow. To talk about uh getting things drawn with uh interstate and renewing all the agreements that need to be related to go into another season of permanent parking requirements.
I guess I would add, I I'm not aware of any significant changes to the program for permission.
Yeah, we have a permit party.
We don't we don't need land and I don't understand. I'm not aware of any mysterious.
Do we really talk in a relationship with? Money, right?
I think, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think the town takes approximately fourteen thousand dollars in permit revenue annually. Uh, we turn and put that back into operating expenses. For example, the asphalt they do in the north side of Blackstaff. Uh, you know, replacement of the signs and environment materials. Uh, we're not really allowed to operate this as an enterprise for profit. Uh, so uh we've been careful to try and make sure that the money's received matched the the operating expenses going out. You know, Sir Mike. Um. You know, I do wanna get to the Steve Rowley issue, but we also have Mike on here who's uh. Cut a hole in the schedule for coming. So come up here, Mike, who comes over. So the owl captures you.
Thank you. See her. How you doing? Be in the same room.
It is. Yeah.
Good. Still a little important. It's scary. So we're wrapping up our summer projects. We still have. Hopefully six weeks of good weather. We'll see. Change at any moment. Um, up on Supreme, we're. We're in the stages now where the contractor there's just finishing the train, the erosion goal area. We've started revegetation work. We hope that contract is out of there sometime this week. And then the week they should be done. We have a project that's going from Alps up to campground. Snowmaking utility might. It's underway. Uh, we're probably about a third of the way into that project right now that's going there. We're. We're up to about where the where the lower rabbit run crosses the culvert. We're gonna skip that horsie for right now. The final step to be committed to replace the culvert. So it may get replaced this fall and see. All right, it's there. We are pure island. I think it's really close to being up and running here certainly today if it's not there yet. And that project's been going on all summer. You know, we we wrapped up the project that we had over by the road cat side of replacing some of the plants. That's wrapped up. That's we red red stayed. Actually, it's been so moist in. August, we actually have some of the grasses and stuff. We planted twelve thousand plants this summer. Um. We'll see that the gathering raised the most we've ever planted this summer. We have our tree planting they came up on coming up on the twenty third of September. I probably routine twelve to the seedlings are being by the eye on that day. Basin Tower project is complete other than the final flying. Part of the canisters up there. That's the winter. So that's we're we're down with that pretty much. It's there. But the other. I think there's one more day potentially uh helicopter work on our. The campground will be closing this weekend. It's the last week. If the campgrounds prefer to come for service this week and then. We'll wrap that up. We'll keep the summer rolling. Period of time still allow people to park, like campground stuff will be we'll be taking that and putting everything away. Um, as you know, the U T bus service is not changing, same as last year. And there's this some things happen. You saw it to Brighton have joined together their. When the the contract with the bus, they have three. The bus trips up the canyon every day and down for their employees. Snowbird trying to work outs in the canyon transport. Have a one bus, maybe that's two trips. We're looking at, you know, we've looked at this, tried to evaluate what to do, but we're still a little bit temper. A little mysterious because that's we believe that live out. So over a third of our employees live here. And uh then we have a bunch that come up and company vehicles and right here man. We figured out that now it's scary to have five people at the end of crack buses. Employees for this year. Now, we also have some lodges and such. Two. So it's uh it's been serviced publicly primarily. And then more as a community as a whole, we're looking at. So we're not looking at, because we like to try and we try to show up and down, could find something of a base sense for us. We're looking at increasing carbon incentives. Like that. So. Sure, that flexibility, you have to get people up and down. It's there. Then we have our town shuttle that we're all helping with. So here, as you know, last year, we're a record in the United States, a record in Utah, most of the resorts in Utah had record visitation. We kind of had this little thing happen every April, so I don't think we would have gotten there even if that would happen. Probably cut the prior year. The uh in the industry, the sentiment is that it will be a little miter this year. A lot of places, I would say that's probably not gonna come true for this canyon. Um, you know, the fact that we had nine hundred and three inches, world knows about it.
It was two weeks ago.
So we anticipate that business would be strong. Our our season pass sale were on par with last year. There's been some change in the mix. Um, the Altis snowbird product. Season pass price increased significantly. And as a result of that, people had kind of altered the, you know, what what product they purchased, different ways than. To be there. So. We're trying to prepare that we would be as busy as last year. It's somewhere between last year. And it will. And so happens with that. So it's been a great summer. Sure, I was, I mean, really. Like two weeks, two weeks behind and.
Jammers flowers is still all over the place. I mean, it's just beautiful.
We have four projects that are under review with the Forest Service for the future. Uh, one of those projects is eliminating the roadside parking between the bypass road and. Basically up to the. And that parallel line that we're doing there the west side. We're looking to do the expansion of the wildcat lot to accommodate some of that and and little addition over by the catch shop. That's in the process with the Forest Service and that. We have a project we're reviewing for the Albien base. The conveyor, the ski school conveyor, one of the little kids use way up in the air, takes about a million gallons of water. The rest to bring that up right over here to catch us that. And the reason it's there is so the kids can get back for to the to the day launch. Cause they can't hang on the crossbones to to our thing. So we have a project in the work of the Forest Service to put in another conveyor. That would run approximately in the location of that conveyor, but all the way down to almost the bottom of the snowbank, I'd call it the snowbank. It would have been available for the public to use to get up that slope rather than have to use brush them. Then we would move the kids there over to where the old carrot animal store used to be, if you remember. It's kind of. They got it now where the road count comes up the top, parallel that. Uh, so we've got those in submitted for services to wait and help us clean up on that and provide. And an opportunity for people that are first time once, here about those years, they're not trying to hang on the road hill. As far as to make that. There we go. So that's a process with the Forest Service. We are reviewing, we requested one of the things we've learned in the last few years is. High pressure, spend high pressure time that we have lost traverses and we've had skill training, couldn't get people to them. And so we have submitted to to do some work on night traverse, first traverse. And also going out to one's cat, we'll work out there. We wrote it out to cats. We're looking to be able to get a snowcat out to so long. And so that if we have extend high pressure, we can crew so long, like we have a few times. Packing papers, okay, outside the square, you're back to the square. So you got to accomplish. So we're working on that with the Forest Service. And then just to work on the high traverse. To bring more of that bench that we can snow and so that we. If we get those high pressure, that we can still get people out there. We have sort of terrain, snowing basin, so. That was like a tree out of three of it, right?
Uh, of course.
So here, parking, roadside parking, traverse.
I'll be in.
I mean, lots of fans. It has been approved by the Forest Service and need for work. We are actively. In fact, we're we have RFPs due from architects tomorrow. And we're trying, we're hoping to select the architect, start the design process. And this fall winter, uh probably no construction until. All right. Uh, we are moving forward at the same time that I do. Sugarloaf Patrol Shack, we hope to be in a position to construct that summer. Uh, we will have a some geotechnical, geotechnical work done on the Albien Daylight site. Also, there's also a site on, oh, that's the the other one, the other one I didn't mention this. We have a group on the Forest Service putting an equipment storage building on the north side of the Albiens parking lot. Was originally designed to be more of like storage sheds that started up by the cat shot and ran down to where the creek came across the. Basically, it would be divided. And we've recognized that's on a ninety percent slope, having a building that has to step all the way down that and build a transition. Twist and turn that probably does not make the most sense. So we have requested to prepare to just to move the location of that building to the other side of where the. Kind of where the parking lot is the flattest and and build into the hillside there. And that's a very, so we would, our goal would be as capital. And we've gotten to the point where we just continue that portion of stuff that is store or warehouse full of valley and just takes on. So we would be looking for us. Future happen. Maybe there were some of these storage containers that we started. My report. You have any questions? I mean, maybe I can answer for you?
I'm glad you're prepared to make the, thank you. I'm already hoping to make the. And how much storage footage should we be closing in previous? That's right.
It's up to ten thousand square feet. So it'd be like, right now, we're thinking it's a hundred and forty by seven, the bar of building. Hundred forty feet across, facing part of the. You can really, till we do the geotech work. Tended to be more of a cold storage facility, not heated, probably electricity of minimal heat. Somewhere to get stuff out and run it and be a floor facility that. Attention to the slight bass. So that's the other thing that we're starting to indicate now is, you know, as this is included, I don't need to do the damage.
It's great to hear you continue to work on the beginner area. I still have a dozen days out there with my granddaughter last year and it's an amazing beginner area. Like the grades and the slope are just perfect.
Well, that's that's the thing. If you have some great slopes then, but. Right, you can have a lot like that. And we we could open that up for people who aren't in, you know, a special lesson. They that space between the conveyor that will bring that people up will all be available.
That'd be great. We were mostly on this uh snow climb. And it's a little bit of a lethal fantasy. The kids are riding chairlifts and then I'm yelling at her, hurry, Bo, you gotta hurry, Bo. Who knows what that is? If there's tears, you will.
Yeah, all right.
Keep it fun, though.
We we are uh um you are pleasantly surprised that um applications for appointment are significantly greater than.
Really awesome.
And I might tie it up nine and three and do it again. But yeah, the day we opened the application, we got five in the first two hours, which was a couple of weeks ago. So we're seeing a lot of applications. And and we we noticed a fair number of people that were here a year or two ago are coming back.
How much are you producing the personnel this year?
Whatever mother nature gives. I, I noticed that the, with the DASno Forecast Center or whatever, said, the guy said. Wow, we got L. Says, could be warmer, it could be colder, it could be dryer.
Could be.
We'll, we'll see, I mean, I don't, uh. It, it's been, it's been such a nice, cool, wet spring and summer, more wind summer and late summer and fall. Maybe we'll see. Don't need to rent a house, right? Something like in the six hundred to seven.
I think Sharon and I have a request for you, but just. Would you turn off the blinking light on the snow maker, the snow gun that's up on Collins?
Grandma did it that same day.
Back on?
That same council meeting, I thought he got.
So the one on Colin Space is on again?
Yes, I share that concern.
Okay, any other questions, uh, Mike? Very comprehensive report.
I did, sorry, uh, that, that metal structure is kind of, is that, is that a throwaway when they, I mean, if, if all the.
Oh, the spring. Spring, well, so. Probably not when the daylight expansion looks good. We also have in the works that we would do a remodel of the ticket, Albien Ticket Office and existing. And close on their deck space. And when both of those are done, then the sprung potentially could be removed. And we, our thought is, I wonder about that right now, is that maybe we could replace the. This is a, it'd be just a warming up type of placement. The thought, not, don't hold me to it. Who knows? We'll see, because we're, we're probably a number of years away before this. That's been a, that's been a very beneficial structure.
We'll have a constant structure on. Thanks, okay, thank you very much, you're, you're welcome. Okay, are we, I think we're probably ready to go back to, uh. The issue of the, the water fund repayment, uh. Does it make sense for our, our clerk to, would you like to summarize it? Tell us what's happening with this? The Steve Rowley letter?
Yeah, didn't I just do that though, a minute ago? I mean, I'm happy to, what I said, but.
Just wasn't sure you were done.
No, that was, I just wanted to, my intent today was just to put this on the council's radar and say that we would be, you know, so. That later in the audit process, it's not the first time you hear of it, um, and that, you know, to. Basically make you know that there is going to need to be a decision made by the council, um, at some point on this, but. So to anticipate that in the future.
At least only the consent agenda.
We haven't done that yet, we haven't gotten to that, we're still on, this is good, kind of going back to department reports.
Oh, yeah. And the department reports includes the, the.
This was an update within the department report was my intent.
So any other discussion on the department reports, if you want to?
I'd just like to comment on this and maybe lay out a course of action. I, um. Yeah, we could go through the whole discussion again and, and probably, I think what we should do is. Is write a, a resolution between now and the next meeting that documents the plan. And so that we can pass that and that way before Steve finishes our, our audit. We'll have already addressed the issue, he could even put in a footnote. So last year's audit, we've already addressed it with this new plan. And we were accepted it, so I think trying to be on course for that would be good. Um, we could go through the whole math again and, and probably when the resolution gets written and we have a hearing. Um, there'll be people that want to do that and, uh. I went through the math again this morning and I, yesterday I was saying forty dollars, I think it's actually more, uh, might be ten dollars higher per person. The issue is the, um. So I checked the math and I was a little aggressive about it. I, I think there's a couple of interesting things, one, we, we don't really have to accrue interest. Um, and that's a feature, I think that we could go through the whole discussion of it's inappropriate, general fund money. Um, to pay this and is this really what we want to do? I, it's twenty percent of us that would be, that are in solving number three, that, that would be a certain amount of injustice. To using town dollars to, to retire this money. Right? Uh, in this case, I guess we're going the other way, we're paying off the loan, the, uh, water fund loan. I feel strongly that the water fund loan and the expenses, like all other expenses of the water fund. Should be borne by the, uh, enterprise fund itself, that's really the purpose of the enterprise fund and when we do that. That means that people who are actually using the water system are paying to make this loan go. And that makes good sense to me. Um, so I recommend that we prepare an ordinance that, that. The plan I would float out and, and obviously we could have some more discussion about it, but, um. I think if we build into the rate structure, some repayment factor, whether it's fifty bucks, sixty bucks a year. And. And just have that in the rate structure, so each statement would have a quarter of that. Um, I think we get there, we get pretty close to zero balance within ten years if we use, um, well, yes, we have, it was forty one today, I think it's fifty something, but. It's around fifty bucks a person per year. And I think we would get to the end and pay off the loan within a decade. And I don't think it'll have a material impact on our ability to do other wa- water fund projects. But I would say that there's not enough money in the water fund to pay this loan off without the rate adjustment. Uh, and then still be able to continue to refurbish our system. So I think that the funding of this should come from an incremental. Um, charge in the rate structure. Got it, does that sound right to you, Miss Fancy? Does that, does that sound right to you?
Sound right in what regard, as far as.
The shaft to be on?
I don't know that that's my role to weigh an opinion on.
I think it sounds like a coherent approach to repay, if that's consistent with it. Something that Steve Rowley told us. So if that's what the council wants to do.
It is, it is certainly an option that is for the council.
Thank you so much.
I like the justice of what you're arguing.
Frank looks like he's browned.
No, no, not, not at all, I was thinking, I, I mean, I was thinking about technical issues, just to be very clear, Steve Rowley is now our auditor. Uh, he is our advisor. Uh, now, I assume. He would flag this during auditing, I mean, one question, Jen, and you know, I'm not very happy with this set of auditors, but this is last year that we're going to use them. Uh, you know, one question is, why the hell didn't they flag this, the auditors flagged this in years past? So as you, as you, uh, select a new auditor or, or recommend a new auditor. Uh, let's just make sure that we get one that's reasonably thorough. Uh, the, the second issue is, I don't, do you, is there actually a written loan document? That accompanies this, no, so we're treating this as an interest-free loan effectively.
And some of the blanks that Steve says need to be part of your plan. We're not gonna have, we're gonna have to have some kind of answer like. NA. Date of origin.
Yeah, well.
Things like that, we're just gonna have.
So, given the fact that it's an interest-free loan, which is a great boon to the, uh, to the water fund. I think your point about not paying it out of the general fund because of the disparate, you know, population, we've already given them a massive subsidy.
It's been a great deal.
Yeah, it's been a fantastic deal, so, yeah, I don't even think that we should consider doing it out of the, the general fund.
But I do think we should give people a chance to comment and that would just be part of the resolution process, but I agree with you very much.
Yeah, I just.
And it's already been a great deal. It's time to shoot it up, interestingly enough, it does exacerbate our, um. Cash issue with the general fund, uh, because it's going to be. Adding four hundred grand in the cash flow of the general fund over the next ten years, so, you know, we already sort of have too much. Cash in the general fund. It's, uh, it's gonna exacerbate, but no, I, I think, I think, you know, if it works timing wise to do it next month, great, if it doesn't. Uh, you know, we can do it in the following month, but I think we should try to get it done before the end of the year. I'll put the plan in place and to me, the plan would start, um. By us actually approving the, uh, rate adjustment in the water fund like we do in May with all the other funds and it would go. I would think it would be incremental charge would begin next summer. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna try to get a payment out of two thousand twenty four. It would start with the two thousand twenty five fiscal, but we would adopt it in two thousand.
I think that would meet Steve's goals in bringing this before us and. What he's advised us is just that we need to start having a plan on paper and for what we're gonna do.
Well, hopefully he'll think that the resolution will be satisfactory, I would think he will. And so, uh, I, I don't think we need to over manage this or overthink it, I think there's a pretty straightforward course of action that's.
Okay, um. Throw our coils off on that one and move on. And so much for questions regarding the department reports, uh. Uh, Elise, I think you had something having to do with the consent agenda, you want to? Wait in here?
Oh, I was just saying that we need to pass the consent agenda, we, I mean, I moved that we pass it if everyone's ready for that.
Well, that's it, okay, gotcha.
Maybe I could just offer real quick that we did, um. Change the agenda a little bit this month. Typically, we have the consent agenda and then department reports afterwards and I, so I think we, we kind of caught you there, Elise. Um, and so a lot of the discussion about department reports. Ends up happening like in the middle of the consent agenda vote. And so to, for us to be a little bit more streamlined, um, we've moved department reports. Up front on the agenda and now we have consent agenda so that we can have that conversation first, so I think you've.
I was just saying we should, we, I'm, you know, we can move on to that point, I wasn't, yeah.
Okay, so Elise has, uh, moved that we, uh, approve the consent agenda and Sharon is second to that. Any further discussion?
Can I just make a request that we be very clear when we make motions to approve the consent agenda that we also say. Including the minutes from August ninth of twenty twenty three, that is very important, um, to the record.
Sorry, okay.
No, that's okay, I just.
Is that your intent, uh, at least I believe it was, to approve the consent agenda and the minutes?
From August.
Yes, from August. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
I apologize, but who was the second on that?
Sharon.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings the mayor's report, um. And. Uh, want to say that the Utah League of Cities and Towns, there's a broad ranging meeting twice a year. And, uh, last week was the latest. And I appended all of it, Chris and Jen appended some of it. It's an opportunity to learn how others, uh. In comparable positions around the state are doing their jobs and about combinations. And, uh, I found it very valuable. So here are some, uh, things that stood out to me. There's a lot of consternation about the rapid growth associated effects at. At the level of, these are people, this is not the legislative level, these are people at the municipal essentially level like us. Uh, the concern is that the bad for services, the increased property values, congestion. And all the other consequences come with growth. Uh, another theme I found was that many people have moved to a community. Because they like its qualities, like we, most everybody here asks, right? And they want to keep it that way. And they're just, uh, they find that those qualities are being threatened by the increased population. Uh, there's widespread resentment over state employees' imposed mandates. Uh, there was surprisingly little talk about water. It's like one winter of a big. Snow and the water problem has gone away, you know, magically. These are not really, uh. Important exactly to what we do, but there's some absolutely fascinating keynotes. Uh, there was one. There were two. Uh, this meeting, one was about a journalist who was dragged across the frozen river into North Korea and held for a hundred and forty days. And it was, uh. Spellbinding talk, and the other was about an FDA, was given by an FDA. FBI agent who caught. US's longest running Russian spy. Boy, I mean, these are irrelevant. You can't. The room is silent. No one is fidgeting. Uh, I got some, uh, unsolicited compliments on our hosting the conference of heirs meeting in July. And encouragement to do it again, which we will do. A couple of quotes from the governor's talk, it rests for twenty minutes or so. People are fascinated in how weird we are. And. And the other one was, it's harder to be a mayor than to be a governor. Okay. You can honestly trade positions with me. Um, so our district ranger, Kai Hotsi, who's been, has, um, who was on temporary duty in, uh. In Idaho, uh, almost just a year ago for many months, is now going to go on temporary duty in Wyoming. And we'll be back, uh, we'll be back until January. Um, and we have a problem with continuity in our Forest Service partners and that's, that is an issue for us. Uh, Mike Moore, he had all our planning, a retrospective look at last year's response to the. Winter's extended closure scenarios and strategies. And the strategized practices for the upcoming winter. And that will kind of serve as our emergency planning exercise for this fall and all other that I, I'm. Relatively confident that out of that will come some. More ideas. Where we go from here and so forth. Want to say anything more about that?
Keep building those partnerships and out of that chaos.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, uh, the council, we, we talked about it at staff meeting. Um, about how the town managed last year and some of the emergency contingencies. Um, and I know that we had a staff report on emergency declarations and how that would work. Is the council comfortable with its role of understanding how that would work, we sort of. Came right up to the precipice last year, we didn't actually ever have to declare an emergency or take any action, but I just want to make sure that. That the council's comfortable with, uh, understanding the process of what would. It's feel like that would be a good thing to have in place before. Something happens, so I'm just trying to get your input on that.
I think that, um, all actions that were taken were taken judiciously. And, uh, I applaud the good decision-making and critical thinking that went into that. I, I personally was fine with the reporting, but it's also, you know, it's always great to be, uh, in the loop. Um, but I think it went well and, and.
We're not really here to participate in emergency situations, you know, we're the legislative body. I appreciate you asking though, and uh, but I would say for now, I'm a couple of setup with the reporting we got. What do you?
No, it's interesting. I I. You guys were absolutely, absolutely amazing, phenomenally amazing. It was really. It was very difficult at various points for various reasons, and I cannot thank you enough. I I'd also be happy to um offer comments off the table on what it's like to be a. A resident, not necessarily in the immediate group. You know, my husband has a a different role and is in the immediate group, uh, loop. And, you know, I I think. I've shared that I had um twenty-five college students locked in my house for thirty-six hours over New Year's. And um that was a lot. Yeah, um, just the whole like, like, I, in some ways, I wish there was almost like a every few hours. Hey, we're working on things. Don't have any update. Hey, you know, and like, who gets on that? Who gets informed list, you know? I know I obviously have some insider information, but it is interesting, like the angst that goes on in the community. You know, the angst that goes on like, because people know somebody who's staying in another house and you hear all these good rumors. And so there is this like buildup, you know, and so. I I wonder if there is a way to communicate to 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 all. That that, because everybody knows you're working on it, but what does that mean? Like, we're not gonna, like, I tell patients, you know. Your tests are gonna take five hours. I will not be back in this room for six hours. Don't ask any questions. After six hours, you can ask a question. I I don't know. I I don't know for the average person and maybe, maybe I'm just, but. Oh, my God. Bless you.
Well, wasn't there an email chain sort of letter that that was sent around fairly regularly?
Sometimes, sometimes I think that, you know.
In extraordinary situations, um, like when we had the power outages and, you know, in advance, so. First, there was the cold week and then there was the hot week. And I think that. And I or Mike, I was actually Mike, as the incident commander marshal, were emailing the council. With an update on.
And loved those, loved the like, we don't know if you want to get out, get out, because you're not gonna get out for three or four days.
And then there's all essential communication too, which is really, you know, that's the stuff you really need, so.
So I mean, I think what you're saying, Carolyn, is it better to have more frequent. Uh, updates, even if they say, really, we don't have anything new to say, so. The last one is still applicable.
Yeah, we don't have anything to say. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Because it is kind of funny, but who who has the right to know like that? The person who went to the house, staying in the house, you know?
So, yeah, it's a real Iowa act. I'm gonna manage the information. Um, there there's. Yeah, there's different levels of information that we release. You know, there's the stuff that we put out on our social media. There's the stuff that goes to our residents via text and email awards. Uh. But I think your your comment about uh, you know. Looking for ways to keep you more regularly informed, you know, um, that's fair. You know, we'll we'll work on that. Um, we've we've learned that every time. Push the send button, it blows up the world. Uh, all our points become overloaded. We, we, we want to men. We want to measure that, you know, in a way where we're not inviting trouble that we don't need, but um, you know, I like, I like your comment. I think someone can work on. You know, and uh, yeah, I guess the third tier is uh, you know, the information that the media gets all of them. Um, and that can really wreak havoc for us. You know, we wanted to communicate with our media partners. We want. The power of the information that they can put out so that. You know, the mountain canyon is not a logjam for four days. Um. But at the same time, they can get everybody uh spun up and, you know, we run into information conflicts. Um, every time we do a closure. What we're doing in the town of Alta may not match what's happening at Silver. We might be on a completely otherwise. We're going along straight uh like travel between lodges. And as that information starts getting out more regularly, you know, our escapee problem goes up. Uh, particularly with bike house road residents, we have. Frequent with people that do not understand they are not at Silver when they're running a popular bike house road. And, you know, they're following the wrong information channels and. Yeah, so like I say, it's a bit of a high wire act and uh sometimes we're grateful for. You know, the brave, they shouldn't, you know, and we're in and say, okay, this is a, this is a calm period. Let's take advantage of it. Uh, but we know you need to know what's going on and. Um, we'll do our best. We're totally hoping to continue with your updates because they were, they worked out well for me to email us if that, that was great. Well, you know, that really underscores um. You have the need for the town to have a really engaged emergency manager. Um, because when we're out doing operational things. Um, we can't always push the pause, but what Chris was able to do is our emergency manager. Manager and get, you know, the council updates out and do, you know, behind the scenes work uh. We really needed it and it really helped the scenes through us later. As Chris's role changes with down and, you know, we start looking at how we, you know, uh. You know, with our staffing issues, you know, I would ask you to put a. Real hard eye on the emergency manager role. Um, you know, not only did you appreciate them, but the governor invited him to have dinner. It was matching with the club.
Oh, really? Oh, that's awesome.
Did you were? Yeah, really.
I was gonna say.
At least can you repeat that?
Uh, I was. I was gonna say, Chris, I also really appreciated uh the updates that we got weekly from the the department of uh the county for the the. I don't know what they're called, the flood engineers or the, we were put on a list. Like, yeah, I thought that was really great for spring runoff. Um, and I would love to see that continued on. Whether we're on a big year or not, sometimes you can have a regular snow year but have hot temps. And our flood situation can change. I just thought that was a really nice email to get every week to figure out where our river was, whether it was at flood stage or max or. Um, like that addition.
Thanks, Elise. I appreciate that. I actually don't think that I or the town did anything to get you guys on those email distributions. I think that was a product of the county declaring. And the state declaring their own uh, you know, spring runoff, snow melt emergencies and that just. Um, freed up all these resources to do communication and planning and actually spend money. You know, on the ground, doing debris removal and so forth, sandbagging. Um. You know, subsequent to that declaration. So, but there is always a runoff program that's, it's one of, so the county flood control's big products, kind of work products and. Um, so I'll be thinking this year, well, when we start to hear about the the spring runoff, you know, what communications are going out. It was, it was really nice to. To get that reassurance every day that they were on top of it, for sure.
And I I would say that respect the runoff. This kind, it was company to see, what was it, two thousand sandbags in the parking lot?
Yeah.
Of which, oh, and a few were you in, but boy, the thing. You know, that's the way to get ahead of the problem. You know, that was a uh. Extension of mayor's report, which hasn't been completed. Uh, so our, the next item is our town general plan is two decades old, although there were minor updates in two thousand fifteen and sixteen. So it's time to take. A serious look at where our plan is going, more importantly, where we want to want to go. So toward that end, I hope to have a retreat like facilitated meeting sometime this winter to address this issue. Uh, and now to the entertainment report. Uh, if you want to watch exciting volleyball play by locals, come to the town park on Sundays at five P M. And we have two. More or less regular players in the room with us here and there. And it's uh, it's great entertainment, great entertainment. And our next town council meeting will be October eleventh at uh three o'clock. And now it'll be in this format again, I hope. All right, so much for the mayor's report. Which gets us to uh.
What's uh?
Resolution twenty versus this thing about the.
Discussion possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash R twenty. A resolution repealing and replacing R twenty twenty-three dash R R sixteen, approving an I L L related, I L A. Inter local agreement relating to the conduct of C B, C B D G and HUD program. Did you, you want to, why don't you two guys just give us a paragraph on what this is all about?
May I quickly ask a question about your repair?
Oh, sure.
Um, you said that there were a lot of people expressing frustration at state imposed mandates. Was that about COVID and mask mandates?
Everything.
And state?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
It was like, we're all for local control, except.
When it's exercise. That's all thanks.
It was not, it was just. Possible.
Many, many different issues.
Yeah.
But I was really encouraged to hear yous uh pick growth out as something people were. Because I think that's long overdue. I personally think, you know, majority of our problems in the state are caused by our obsession with being number one in growth year after year and. It's time for that to go away.
Yeah, and there's some interesting data there.
I mean, why do you get those people a little rage on?
More involved in politics, I guess.
There was a spectrum, there there, there was a survey that showed a spectrum of uh attitudes towards growth. And one out of five people want zero growth.
Yeah, only one out of five.
Yeah, only one out of five, like that, that fraction piece going up. And uh, womenations in various ways. I mean, there's a a fraction that says, uh, open the doors and.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the most offensive practices um is the idea of using state money to attract. New businesses and subsidize new businesses, which actually makes it harder on the people that are already here operating. And it's just a really counterproductive policy. So. That's taken up our meeting today. I I'm a strong and deep grother.
Okay. Okay, uh. Let's see, we're just on item seven, discussion of possible action resolution twenty twenty-three dash R twenty. And I was gonna ask either Cameron or. Or Chris to give us a short.
I'll nail you guys out if you need me to.
All right, okay, but give, give me a, let me give a shot, Jen. So we entered into uh. We, you know, signed the agreement to participate in the county uh T V G program. Uh. And then another city essentially qualified as an entitlement entity. Uh, which meant that they didn't, they could essentially compete for funds at the same level as the the urban county program. So the parties to the original agreement that we entered into a couple of months ago changed. We had to sign a new agreement. It's not right. Is that about it, Jen?
That is correct. Harriman is pulled out.
Harriman.
And that was really the only substantive change in the argument.
Yeah.
But we have to have a whole new I L A with new language and all of, all of it, so.
Yeah, but shall we go ahead and move to accept this?
I recommend we do that.
So move.
Second.
Any word of discussion?
I'm prepared. Oh, excuse me. Quick question. Um, does this get hairman equals standing though? Us?
What basically.
With all the communities that are.
There's a lot of explaining.
Thank you.
Harriman outgrew their eligibility for this deal.
As a size.
And so they, they're in the pot.
Everyone's.
With with the big cities.
Right, I should be.
I mean, is that? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think you moved to adopt.
I moved second by Carolyn.
And then because this is a resolution, I think we need a roll call vote.
Okay.
Correct? Are you okay if I do that or does somebody local want to do it?
Molly.
I can get it.
Thank you, Molly.
I'll just go around the table. Uh, council member burn.
Hi.
Council member David.
Hi.
Mayor Burr.
Hi.
Council member Ansel.
Sounds like we're supposed to say yes. We say.
That's right.
I think both.
You're supposed to say.
Say yes.
Because I guess.
Yes.
Just says, I don't know if you're saying yes or no. If you say I, I'm not sure.
Oh, this is my question, President. I'm gonna draw the eye and say. And say yes.
Yes, 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 yes. And Elise. And Elise.
Council member. Morgan. Unanimous.
Say not I? Now, introduction uh for criminal civil code enforcement by uh Mike and Cameron. Let me work first.
You're wearing that.
Thanks for giving us a few minutes um on this and uh really what we're hoping to do today is uh. Get the council to uh, you know, be in line with, yes, with the staff thoughts about uh how we're enforcing our ordinances. Um, and it's funny, the uh. Subject of the legislature's come up more than once today, and I'm here to tell you that this comes up every session. Where there's always something where the legislature is going out for cities and towns, trying to restrict their ability to enforce their ordinances on a criminal basis. You know, we've, we've used our lobbyists to argue uh against that, you know. In particular, when it comes to our interlegible ordinance, you know, which we feel strongly about needs to have to keep it. Every city in Salt Lake County uh in our area. It is currently going through a revamp of their parking enforcement code. And we uh take the their parking enforcement over to a civil enforcement arena. And that's because the old way of doing business um is subject to a number of legal challenges. Uh, when we do a parking citation, we're basically arresting the car, not a person. And uh, that brings up a proof of service and a due process issue and those constitutional protections that it has. And uh, one of the things that we as the prosecuting entity need to be able to say is we, we serve the. Copy of the summons of citation on the defendant and leaving a slip on the car does not beat that standard. The civil um code enforcement will allow us to continue that practice, you know, there's. You know, there's also some consequences that could conceivably occur. Um, you know, we. We operate under the presumption that registered owners when they committed violation, our ordinance, um. You know, holds the registered owner responsible, but many times that's not the person who was operating and uh. You know, committed violation. So theoretically, somebody's kid or parent could go to the car register, the other. Kind of appear to commit a parking violation. Uh, we give them a coupon, they drive away, they blow it off, and they get a warrant for their arrest when they weren't even in Alta that day. So again, we've got some procedural issues. Uh, we want to avoid that coming up in a criminal court. Uh, by handling violations on an administrative or civil basis. Uh. We think that's a better way to serve uh the town's goals, which is, you know, parking compliance. On, in in either arena, town's got a burden to show that the the actor and defendant, you know, committed violation. So. Um, in the criminal arena, you know, it's a higher standard. Um. In the civil arena, you know, it's a fifty-one versus forty-nine percent of the fund. It's, yeah, I want to be clear. We're not looking for a tool to make it easier for us to go out and write tickets at all. We don't want to write tickets. We want compliance. Um, if we do write a citation, we want to make sure there's an abundance of evidence on the violation. We're not looking to make this any kind of revenue generation tool. Uh, to go out and, you know, just lay the hammer down. In fact, we want just the opposite. Um. I think that there is opportunity uh in other parts of the town code. I think parking, and realistically, we have to, we have to find a way to contend with. Uh, maybe with any of the civil enforcement issues, because the issues that I brought up, and that means extra uh. Staff work, you know, we're gonna have to come up with a different way of tracking violations, put some new notices, and we're gonna have to uh. Arrange for an appeal for your administrative logic. And we're gonna have to arrange for an appeal for your administrative law judge separate from our justice court judge. Because our justice court judge cannot be our administrative law judge. So we need to have some of the staff up and take that role. I think there are opportunities other parts of the town code for civil enforcement to be a very good tool. You know, one example I would have is. You know, we've got some eighteen year old employee pounding nails at fifteen minutes after six o'clock on a weekday, you know, violating our structure laws. We go out and we arrest them. Convict them of that crime, and really that's what it is. If this one is a crime. They go to some other employment in six months. Or they go to apply for a college. They can't get in because they've got a criminal record. Because they were banging nails for it, in this way. Is that something we want to handle on another level? You know, doing with the violation and the penalty, or aligning each other. There are also areas where. I think it's prudent to leave our ordinance criminally enforceable. I think Cameron's got a great philosophy that is a properly constructed town code, and this is a project that happened, happened over time. You know, some of our ordinances could be discretionary enforced, you know. Based on how outrageous the violation is, you know, if it's a low level thing, it could be a civil violation notice and you can. You know, pay the standard fine or anything for it, you know, it's something that we agree with for justice courts. So, you know, there is the opportunity as many municipality to have our ordinances done either way. That figures the town, almost flexibility that we probably need. You know, one comment I would make about it is that. I have enormous respect for our police force. And with their discretion is, is the enormous discretion. And that, that really. Makes me feel very comfortable about this one. It's, it's high comfortable to try and look at that. You know, one other benefit of civil enforcement is you don't have to be a police officer to be the one to issue a violation notice. So other officers probably kind of, for example, a building inspection. There would be civil enforcement, you know, assess a construction project, and they're not following, you know, the code, okay. They will be empowered to take a civil enforcement action on the spot. If the council can give that authority to them. So. Again, you know, this is about working smarter and giving the top word utility. I think.
I think Mike's covered it really well. It's, it's another tool in the toolbox. And when I was a police officer, the more options I had, the better it was because. I think criminal enforcement carries a severe burden, Mike's touched on a lot of those. For any criminal violation, except for infraction. There is the potential of jail time. That's a big deal, right? This probably sounds weird from a town attorney, but I, I am a firm believer that the government is there to help, not to oppress, right? We're, we should be taking action that is, that to help everyone function together in a community, right? And so sometimes you have to be heavy handed with a criminal violation. But the potential fines, the criminal history, the jail time, that's a big deal. And I think, I think we should be, we should be looking for other options if other options are justified. And this enforcement tool has existed for a long time. It's just been expanded by the legislature recently. And so it is just more cost effective and it's, it's useful in more options than a criminal violation. And we, we laid the groundwork for that in the parking program. Because we cannot designate interstate parking as issuing criminal violation. That can only be issued by law enforcement officers. And so we sort of have a little island of parking enforcement with civil enforcement. This would just expand it to any. Any other ordinances that the council's comfortable with.
I think that's important thing is the setting of the limits or defining some boundaries. It's a significant diminution in the burden improved. So with respect to more serious crimes, I think that it needs to stay criminal so that the higher standard of. The higher burden improved is in effect. And just a couple of the quick comments. At the beginning, you said, well, there'd be some additional staff work. But correctly or wrong, that's really stool, stool of staff work. And one of the features of this would be less burdensome paperwork for Mr. Mayor type crimes. And, you know, as we sit here and every year we look, we say, oh, my gosh, look at the A M O budget. So, you know. There are not a lot of concrete things we can do to address the growth in the A M O budget. And, but I actually think that this, that's like the silver lining of this in my mind. And hopefully over time it will be less burdensome for Mike and other results, less burdensome for the department. I think that. I, I would love to have a little more time to. To read more deeply. There must be some public essays or. A little more deeply about what other people are doing or thinking, or how other, where other townships are drawing the line between. What can be handled by the officer on duty in a civil way and what really has to stay criminal? And so maybe that's actually just seeing a draft of whatever ordinance you want to propose or. Or sending us a few ordinances from other places that you think are well done. And I think taking a month, you know, cycle to read some of that, think about it. Think about what others, people are making sensible judgments on, you know, what can be handled under the new civil approach. I think that would just be important approach to this. And I think we still, we are on track to approve the resolution, you know. Before the end of the year, but I think we should take a little bit more time and do a little bit more homeworks that we set them on in a righteous place.
For sure. That, that's really why we wanted to bring this to the council to, so that we could have that dialogue and get you the information. Just anecdotally, the easiest way to look at the segregation is to look at the state code. Title seventy six is the criminal code, and so all of those offenses are fall under criminal prosecution.
Always.
Always.
So the police officer cannot make a judgment on that. Those are like always crimes.
As far as the classification, yeah, they have to go by that code. So in order to arrest someone or issue a citation or under this, the criminal code, it has to be in that code. A police officer cannot go give somebody a ticket for not paying their warranty. Or for. I'm trying to think of other civil stuff because I don't deal with those much, but the, so we could segregate the town code. These ordinances are only criminal. And then the other stuff is, is civil. You can also segregate it within the code enforcement itself, right? You can say title, these three titles of the town code are only subject to the rest of these.
And we could, we could set it so that some of the. Levels of crime could be handled either way. So we could have some discretionary. Yeah.
Except for those things in the seventy six that are like the obvious, like you can't shoot somebody and back the rest.
Right, right.
We're working out to prosecute violations of state law through the criminal system.
So I, I guess I'm a little bit confused. So it, it sounds like this. Like, did we miss something that we don't have this civic thing? Because I can see areas in which it's very hopeful, like. Hey, you know, a violation of our interlock. You know, like, like, whoa, you have to say that I committed a crime. Well, maybe it's the fifth time I've told you, yeah, I can't walk between that building and that building. Then, yeah, maybe that's a crime because I told you five times. But like, how do you enforce these things if you don't have this civic? Why? And I, I said, did we miss something?
No, I mean, conceptually, that's how we, how the staff has discussed the, the program, right? Is when we changed the winter parking, it says that the town has the discretion to prosecute a violation criminally, civilly, or administratively. So, so right now, that option, those three options exist. We just haven't fleshed out any civil process. So we can choose to do it in the civil process. There's just no process to follow. So now we only have criminal and administrative. And administrative is like the building permit, the, the dog license, the built, you know, zoning stuff. And so we're sort of missing that middle gap. So we either have to use the hammer or the feather. We really don't have anything in the middle. We, but we've written the option and we just need to.
For that one ordinance.
Yes.
Right.
Only for parks.
Exactly. And for low level crimes, I think this, you know, low, low level infractions, I guess you should say, I think this makes tons of sense. And, and reducing the paperwork burden, that makes tons of sense too. I think it's just figuring out where that line is, where you want to say, geez, anything above this line is serious enough that we want to. You know, try to stick with the criminal.
Do you have something in particular that you've been thinking about, John?
You know, and that, probably not. And that's, one of the things that I'd like to read up on is, you know, what is a class B Mr. Mayor? And how come class A Mr. Mayor is, what does that mean? How come it's not on the list? And, and that's what I would just like to do a little more reading about and, and see. And then, of course, there's everything that's not a Mr. Mayor. And basically, I, my understanding is that everything that's not a Mr. Mayor is on the state's list that you have to be criminally. So, but it's just, I, I think just trying to get a little better perspective on it. But I would think of this as mostly related to enforcement of, of very low level crimes. Like a parking violation.
Or things that, you know, sort of think about crimes, like when I, when I.
Infraction, I guess.
Yeah, because like when I speed, is it crime? You know, or, or when I.
Your reckless driving.
Yeah.
If I could, let me just throw out a couple more comments, you know. And like I said, the legislature is pushing part of this. And there are places where. There's a perception that cities and towns are abusing their ordinance authority. And people are going to jail for not following their law. It's a violation, you know, of the city ordinance. You know, they get a ticket for this week's July occupancy. They fail to tear it apart under ticket, get arrested, or they go to jail. For not following their law. It, it does happen. You know, let, let me just throw this council for it to sit wherever it does. You know, they're going to the office, he's beating our dog. Look at this. We got. You know, I'm, I'm thinking, you know. You know, first offense warnings, civil.
To go, right, to really want to be. It's attacking a criminal violation that comes with a charge, you know. Yeah. So again, flexibility and that's. Sounds great. Appreciate, we appreciate the effort that went into preparing this. And I would say we'd like to move forward.
Yeah, and this, this is just, as Cameron said, you know, in order to use the concept and start a conversation. Yeah, I think this is a homework that people will. Thank you so much.
Please come down. That's amazing.
Okay. That is item eight and second of council regarding. Little Cottonwood Canyon, E I S, record and decision, which really I'll pair with item ten, discussion of possible actions. Support Mayor Burke signing a resolution, Salt Lake Valley, municipal mayors regarding. The. Little Cottonwood Canyon, E I S. This, I think, is quite straightforward. The council of mayors has put together a document, a resolution. That says, at its bottom line, there's a bunch of whereas, and at the bottom line says. Complete. Steps one and two, phases one and two entirely, and evaluate them before you start on phase three as a document. I would like the council's. Support or endorsement of my signing on with the rest of the mayors on that resolution.
Have you read it?
Yeah.
I have a nice shaperna coffee.
Yeah, we had a conversation about it.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Roger, I was gonna say that this is, you know, when people ask me whether you support the gondola or not, it's like a. I don't support the gondola, but I support. The way that they did the little cottonwood canyon, E I S, and I guess having a NIPA background, I like that they adopted a phased approach. At least they didn't just say, we, we want a gondola. You know, they said that we want to do all these other phases as part of this decision. And so. I like that, that they did that, but they're missing the component that you've proposed, or the council of mayors has proposed in this resolution, basically saying. If these things are gonna work, let's not do the gondola. And that's kind of like the part that I feel like we've been missing, or, you know, let's evaluate these decisions before we move on to the next phase. So I think this is a great document that we could support. I, I really believe that some of those things in phase one and two could dramatically change Little Cottonwood Canyon's traffic problem and maybe solve our issues. Like, I don't even know if we need to get into that third phase of the, of the process. But I do think that UDOT needs to evaluate those, not just continue down the road. Or timeline. I mean, I know there's no funding currently for the gondola, but. I, that could happen for many, you know, from anywhere. But I think what the council of mayors is proposing is great, you know, like proceed with these steps, evaluate as you go. And maybe we don't need to do anything further.
Yeah, so I, I want to have this discussion in two parts. First of all, I'd like to get the sense of the council, and this is not really a resolution, that I, that you endorse my signing this joint resolution. Okay. That is.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Now, secondly, I would like to have, and I don't have today, a more. Pointed resolution that basically says, don't ever do phase three. Now, get this gondola off the table. And so that, we haven't, of course, we haven't put to writing yet. But that's where, that's where I'd like to go next for our town, in other words, to be. Have a more stronger position than that whole group of mayors.
Do you want us? I'll just jump in. The, I think I largely agree with Elise. I, I consider myself pro decision, anti gondola. And I think the decision was actually really well structured. And, and in terms of like what we could have hoped for, I think that the decision is, is exceeded my expectations. And, you know, putting all this focus on phase one and phase two. I was a little sad to see the letter get whittled back and lose the reference to the common sense solutions program that Jenny Wilson developed. But I guess that's just where we are trading. Yeah, I, I think. For people that are interested, I think her letter from last October seventeenth was really right on. Yeah, it's great analysis of the situation. Yeah. You know, coined the term common sense. And so I, you know, I, I think that they did a good job. I think it's probably unrealistic to think the word gondola was going to be able to be completely removed from the discussion. You know, but they certainly have subordinated it into a whole bunch of other action, most of which. We've been asking for, for years. One of the noticeable ones that isn't on the list is. Traction control, all winter long traction control, which I think is like the easiest layout out there. And I, I just don't understand why they won't go there. Because it's the traction controller on somebody's rental car that screws it up most of the time. So I am in favor of you signing this. I mean, generally, I think the decision was well structured and a favorable decision for us. And I think when people say, well, what are we going to do to keep from getting to number three and, and, and go into gondola? I think. The idea of us making a more concerted effort to support mass transit. Is, is where the difference is going to fall. And maybe we need to come up with more creative. Ways to support mass transit because it's, you know, not as heavily used by. By local people as we'd like to see, and there's almost no transient use of it. And so hopefully we can, you know, we can all rally up together and, and come up with some better ways to encourage mass transit use. And that's going to be. The thing that's going to put the nail in the gondola is because there's no need for a gondola because the traffic jam went away. So that's where my head's at almost.
I have two things to say. One is our citizen input. I do not know Jacob Minus, but I thought he had a really interesting thing to say. What I heard him say was you don't really hear anybody absolutely sort of like from us opposing it. So I think that Alta coming together with a group of mayors having a statement that says. You know, this is what we believe, I think he had an interesting thing to say, cause. So I I like that one, second thing is, um, I think, and you and I talked a little bit about this, is that. I'm not a structural engineer, nor do I understand these things, but the concept of turning people around halfway up the canyon, cause they didn't pay the toll. It's just ridiculous, and um, like amplifying the traction control issue. And so, um, to me, I I I don't know how one affects, like, making sure phase one and two actually have a good. Effort, successful, and not seeing those two fail.
Caroline, if I could jump in, uh, you guys may or may not know the someone active in the anti gondola movement. Well, uh, I I agree with you, John, but the structure of one, two, the the three phases is is good. What's not good is that UDOT has made. The transparency around the implementation of phase one, or any commitment to share the data. Because I suspect, as Elise has already articulated, that we may find that there's no reason. To have a a gondola, but only if the data is shared. And that lack of commitment so far, I find profoundly disturbing. And and I think we may have to put, I I I'm working to put some pressure on them, but but it may be appropriate for something for the town of Alta to consider at some point.
Would be part of our resolution.
Would it be appropriate to ask Mike?
Oh, yeah, he went like he had his hand up.
Yeah, I forgot to include this in the update, so the. You know, we've been asking you to help us get people out of canyon, what you were doing with the bypass road, main road, main line open. We had an meeting with you that several months ago, and they said they would have everything, the current report is, is there. Probably have got a gate that's gonna go in at entry two, to keep entry two closed at the end of the day, so people can't go out of entry two. Level improvement, and as you know, right now, they're milling the hill in front of the dryer station there on entry four. Supposedly putting down a much coarser road base there, that hopefully will help the cars get out and get out there. That's as far as they're willing to go this year, and they're installing cameras, so they wanna understand. How traffic is moving thirty miles an hour below snowboard, but they're liking out, even though I tried to tell them, explain to them like what. Data, which is something to prove it, and then hopefully they'll be able to take some action on that. We're actually gonna install a camera up on the gun house, but we can also have a picture. We have cameras going in both of our attributes this year too, so we'll be able to. I have a timer sample and things for them. Cause I, you know, I think that, you know, if, so it's interesting, busiest day in our history. Last twenty-five years, the last day. No public transportation. The people carpool, canyon roads, do all kinds of things, we had over seven thousand people. And uh, which kind of suggests, you know, maybe. It's like, we have as many people here as we want to have. Which involves they weren't all skis. Yeah, alright, it was bad. So, uh, but uh, uh, you know, the other part I would say is missing is, you know. The attention is being taken away from how we can defend our home, that would really help us. Traction law, snowsheds, or even the idea that road closes. Got a hill traffic, three, six, a lot there. Those are all, that last one in particular, is, you know, take a little coordination, you have to be with emergency services and such, but. So we're, we continue to take the position, we are supporting things that improve transportation. We should, we wanna keep the focus on the issue and doing the best. And it's there, in order to support like your traction going, trying to, we. We have less faith in the bus system being the answer, just because we've been trying for some years unsuccessfully. Those things that.
So, is nobody agree with you?
But you don't think so encourage, um, bus use, don't you pick up the tap, pass holders around the bus? I mean, I think that kind of thing is a powerful thing, it's hard to get to. A raw bus service when they're cutting it down at the same time they're saying it's gonna, the assholes are just probably going to tell them we're gonna actually.
Right, and that's the part I mean about the, in my mind, it seems that we're not giving a robust phase one or phase two. They set it up with failure when they say we need a bus.
Well, it's, well, it's not you that is doing that, I mean, it's UGA, so UGA cut the bus service. Cause they couldn't get enough drivers, everybody was struggling to get them. The challenge is under federal mandates, because they've cut the service, the ski service is one of the last services they can restore. Because they have to go to all of the disadvantaged and lower income areas first, restore bus service. So that's why they're not able to bring ski bus service back online, even though they have a few more drivers for this year. That's why they're willing to give some money for other other things, you know, to kind of encourage things, but.
Yeah.
It's been challenging, and it's peaked, three percent of the skiers have been down. It's not a very. And if we can double it, it's still. So it's, there's a place for it, we'd like to see it, if you want it, it's there, but it's just not. It's harder, I think, to give them a longer term solution that. I'd love to see someone like that, but you know, buses in canyon, that's a tough too. The car, it's there, but it seems like these other things. So, keep that name line open, you know, you know, and and. An example of this area down, Chilean, the bottom, and South America, so basically, we don't have to do that, solve all the traffic.
In combining uh, Mike's request, um, we should make it a crime to come up here without.
That's great, that's great input, um, that that you don't see the answer being in more bus services, the bus services is gonna save the day here.
It would, you know, I would, I think they have to give it a try, um, you know, we've been. Trying to make bus service work for a long time, it's it's challenging, depends on the demographic. It works for a cycle of this. It doesn't work for that, it doesn't work for, you know, a lot of people that need the flexibility. And some of that demographic, people who can ski are. Turning, working downtown, he has a couple hours, he's jumping his car, he's slipped up there to the jet, jumped out of a hospital, somewhere in the hospital, whatever. Doesn't work for me, it works a lot for maybe some of our more senior people that retire, have the flexibility to come. And not on that schedule, that's not true. And it's, there's a lot of stop people, right, they don't ski these days, they're top of the.
I couldn't do a ski, but I'm a cop. No, that's interesting, though, you know, and and so, putting the effort on some of these other things, and I I love the death, the closing the. I'll call traffic for a few hours, but put in more effort on these other things, you think it's gonna burn more fruit?
And I I would like, and I think we should try to emphasize those things. The bus thing can go on, but, you know, the buses, it's it's two, three, right, there's that, the get buses. You gotta figure out where to pick everybody up, where you're gonna park them, and all the cars associated with them, it just has. It has a lot of infrastructure and cost initiatives associated with it too, and there's. Here's some things we can do, and the other one, that that was, it's gonna snowshed up here for plows. Now, so we have plows in the canyon, so when there's an issue, you can put a plow on the road, you have to call, wait a half hour for the plow. So, you know, there's some things like that, it seems like, to get these things done in that manner, in that phased approach, and some of them. Unfortunately, they'll mark in right now, some of the. But can we do it, something, we just gotta keep pushing, try and figure out. Get these things to go in, and, cause they could, I think they could.
Well, you've been very, I know, um, that you guys have been very supportive of UDOT, their operations up here, and they have so little infrastructure up here.
I know it's great, for what it's worth, I think the comments are usually publicly on the network, have been quite balanced, and uh. I'm not so sure the sober is taking uh, as much of a common sense approach, but I really appreciate your suggestions to explore the things like. The like the anti-slip stuff, and things that just seem to make a lot of sense, and are a hell of a lot cheaper than some of the stuff that's coming up.
I mean, I think gondola can be the.
Seems like a prudent approach.
So we may be coming back to it at some point in time to, to support a letter or something, some of these other things, as we try to.
Um, thanks, it's new business.
Have a retreat sooner rather than later, like pre-winter, pre-snow flies, like.
I don't know if we can get her ready that uh, that soon, but let's um, we'll pick that, let's pick that other advice. Cause it it's gonna take some preparation, I think these work. Well, we definitely want this outside, so we'll be here and.
Sure, and I, you know, I think we also keep in mind that we have an election coming up.
Yes.
So, I think a retreat is gonna be more valuable, we have an election coming up, and we're hiring a system. A manager whose services suck could be valuable in planning and conducting retreat, and I think having the whole team assembled that we're gonna get you next two years with. Uh, when we conduct that retreat, would frankly makes it work, worth our while, I think, just in one. Unfortunately, and I and I do feel um, guilty that we had such a nice conversation about a long term. You know, a a big issue, big expensive issue, that's gonna take a long term approach, housing, at the August meeting. We don't have a, we don't have a retreat plan for you to review this month, cause I know I offered that to you as, like, the the first good opportunity. Get that on the dashboard, but I do think it's worth taking our time to do it right again, to get the team, get the team some.
Now, that that thing piece that you referred us to last month, is still worth going over it. Uh, it just, it's a lot in there.
Definitely check this, PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, any other new business?
Can I just clarify that there was no vote taken, um, and then you just kind of had a general, some head nods. Go in support of you signing the the, it doesn't need to be a resolution necessarily, but.
Motion.
There could be a motion, if you wanted a record of.
All right, go ahead. Uh, I moved that, um, we encourage Roger to join the uh. Um.
Council of mayors.
Council of mayors in sending the letter presented here. Um, by you, presented in the in the agenda posted review, we reviewed the letter, and we're encouraging you.
Second. Absolutely.
Do we have to have a roll call?
I I support, yes.
Oh, okay, yes, not I, but yes. Unanimous.
And second clarification, do you want staff to work on a separate resolution?
Yes, yeah, I'll work with you after the event happens tomorrow.
Okay, any other new.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I happened to talk to Murray today, uh, reminding me, uh, your wife.
Okay, that one, yeah.
Reminding me that she made some citizen input around getting exemption. From the the potential tolling stations that might be going in a a phase one with UDOT. I don't know if we ever uh, decided to do anything about that, but I think it was a good suggestion. And we at least need to get in the information loop and and find out, A, one, are they gonna be installed? Is it possible to get exemption for for residents here, uh, because I think that would be difficult.
They're having, yeah.
So, um. We are, I don't know if we're opposed to tolling, if you haven't seen, say that before.
Yes.
See, then we are opposed to tolling.
Okay.
And um, we have pushed UDOT on tolling a little bit, they have suggested. That if the skiers had a way to manage the vehicles coming up the canyon, they wouldn't do toll. And parking reservations of all four skiers wouldn't get us there, so we're close to there, and we're hoping that. For all the issues we know about tolling and turning around, it doesn't restrict the number of cars, maybe it encourages more ridership, but. Limited amount of parking does the same, yeah, not even better. So we're hoping that sometime, point in time, as we kind of push that issue with the state more, and try to get. Rather say, parking reservations in the canyon require, rather than tolls, where we're trying to go. And we would maybe come back, ask the town for a better app.
And some of it is based on the idea that you're not gonna change the number of cars, you're just gonna change the demographics of the skier, because it's only gonna be. Wealthier people that can.
That's part of the tolling and the parking, that's part of the town, it's there, yeah. And and it's, you know, it just seems like if we can, we have noticed that just by doing parking reservations, carpooling is increased.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we don't, if the purpose of tolling is to increase the carpooling or reduce the cars. There's no limit, I mean, the tolling, it still lets people come up, and what do you do when parking's full and you pay the toll?
But but like, like, I I thought the hundred and fifty million that the legislature approved. Included money specifically for tolling.
It it does, and that's why we have to go, we have.
Back to the legislature.
Get on that bandwagon with the governor's office.
Okay.
And say, you don't need tolling, that the benefit of tolling is better there by parking, restricting parking reservations. Than toll, that's that's kind of what. We, if, we argue reservations limits on the cars. Period, it doesn't give us cars up here. Tolling doesn't necessarily do that. Uh, it still has the cars coming, it just puts more people in the cars, people to pay, and and then excludes the people that. Know, are trying to learn how to ski, or whatever, we'll get you to our list, it's cause they're gonna go somewhere, if they can't, they don't have to pay for toll and pay for.
It feels kind of like a access to public plans issue, uh, because you're off, you're pricing it beyond their needs, so do they really have public access?
Right, and they just, they've said, and on that exemption issue, they've said they can't exempt, they're gonna put it in. It's gotta be kind of across the board, they can't give these exemptions, and one of the points we made for them is, well, if I sold a parking motivation. Why are you tolling a product that I've sold in public? It's kind of like, it's not any different than, you're trying to go to your house, if you go to your house, right, so it's, so it's kind of. There's the hurdle where it was kind of like, we gotta push this through, we gotta put this tolling thing in here, because that's what we gotta do to get this in the house. I don't think it's the right. It doesn't.
Does it solve the problem?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I think we should give it, give that. When you get our neighbors down the street to jump on the bandwagon, the reservations, and see if that can do the same.
And it seems like in order to keep up your number of skiers, cause I assume that just having a full parking lot doesn't fill. Your skier capacity for the day.
It, no, I don't know that that's, see.
Pretty, what kind of those?
We did, we just proved the last day of the season this year, that we we didn't have public transportation, we filled the parking lot, and we had reservations that day.
Okay.
And 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 we had more skiers than we want. And 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 we had more skiers than we wanted. But people were jumping in the back pickups, riding up. On a normal day, and we, we implemented reservations last season for the version. Then here we implemented reservations. Or or last season, we had reservations in place when we had our record season. Okay, so, and we had, what we've noticed is reservations have been able to take the peaks off of those really busy days. People move more into the, spread them out a little bit more, give them a better ski experience. That's what we like to see. We don't want to, that's what we're trying to accomplish. We think that, so, you know, even if we expanded the skier a little bit, from under Lipton here or there, or Lindislay Gulf for that. You know, a lot more
Do you put percentage of people reserve the parking spot and dump?
This will surprise you because we, we, we thought that it was a high percentage. Because, you know, we were fully reserved out a lot last year and the parking lot never filled, filled. So last year was the first year we were able to get the actual scan data back every day. Ninety eight percent of people make a reservation showing up.
Is there a little seller market?
Well, but I think what's happening is someone makes a reservation, they show up at eight o'clock and they leave at ten or eleven. There's a turnover we haven't been able to exactly quantify. And it works out great. So now you made your reservation, you came at, you got here at eight thirty, you went skiing for your three hours, got here at one and then you left and now someone else came, you both had a great ski experience. Whereas if you both were showing up at eight o'clock, both, your ski experience would have been active for both of you. So, you know, because the line would have been longer, everything would have been like we saw that year, we didn't have reservations, COVID, and everybody came first coming. So we we kind of believe that with parking reservation, we can provide a great ski experience. Build the skier into the level we want to. Not, we don't give a huge change to get them. We need to improve the experience of people getting here and being out.
And you manage the resale of that spot by just having the reservation system and the twelve there. So when other people know that it ends at, is it one o'clock, one o'clock?
And if that got out of control, you could do that by two o'clock. Wherever you, you have levers, we're playing with the levers to try to manage.
You're not like the airlines, like you're not offering somebody like an extra seat for like a thousand bucks if you give up your seat. Do you oversell?
I didn't start to oversell last year. Because, because it was hard to say, we're sold out, and then your lot never fills. People come up and say, what do you mean you're sold out? I want to go skiing and you're not fooled. So we, we did, we did last year, we started playing with that a little bit. And the turnover, and now I'd really like to figure a way to count how cars leave so I could turn it more than that. Well, because I don't, I don't ever want to be in the position where there's not a parking spot for someone that's not there's not a parking spot for someone that's paid.
Oh, yeah, right.
But but the law of averages works out and the old comp of the algorithm. That's what we have, have been an algorithm we're using. It's worked well. And we've still, you know, we tried to build them enough safeguards that we would never have it's worked every day except the last. Didn't that work that day? And we did, and we did build ourselves that, too, just the way we had. So it was just the that out of French.
I love the move toward more parking lot activity views. It seemed like last year it was banned in the parking lot, it's sort of more, I think that makes tons of sense. Kind of getting people to come down off the mountain.
It helps you a lot to, and then and we can bring all that stuff to, apparently really close. One of the things we are playing with a little bit this year is to maybe have the out in the grill, stay open later. And just make it known that that happens. So there's a little bit of maybe an average scheme that some people are attracted to that's maybe delays the pressure. We're just continuing to
Thank you. Uh, any other new business? Sure, second, all of favor.
I?
Yeah, so let me, let me say it. I thought, I thought this was a very productive meeting. I really appreciate the discussion. It really makes it a line.
You have your line, I had to begin.
Whenever the power goes off, it resets the system. Actually, do we have any more plan power?